We will take a break from what we have been doing and do something else today. Partly because the election results will be out tomorrow. And partly also because occasionally, especially on WhatsApp, something or the other thing is coming up. So it's always good to stand up at this Jeremiah chapter twenty-nine, verse eleven. Is that verse familiar? Yes. "I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future." It's a nice verse. There is a reason why we are taking this verse and whatever else is associated over here. When we were in school, we studied English. And one of the questions that will usually be asked is answer with reference to the context, correct? In every question paper, there will be one question, answer with reference to the context. The reason is very simple. Any statement can only be understood with reference to the context. The Bible is no different. When we study the Bible, we must be careful about the context. There are three kinds of context that we will mention. One is the immediate context of the verse. The other is the background of the book itself. It's a verse which is in a book. The book was written by someone, it was addressed to somebody, there was a purpose in writing it. And we should always view the verse against that backdrop. Then the third is the even bigger perspective of the whole tenor of biblical teaching. We should never give a verse a meaning which contradicts what else is said in the Bible. Because the whole Bible is God's word and is therefore consistent. You can never take a verse and give it a meaning which is different from what the rest of the Bible teaches. So if we were to ask those questions, who said this? To whom it was said? When it was said? And why it was said? Then we have some very serious problem. Against, what I am sharing now is against a particular background. In one of the groups had a part of a video was posted. Perhaps some of you might have seen that. Somebody, a girl who dreamed of being a pilot. From the time she was very small, that was her dream. Then after her twelve, she tried to join the escorts from that she didn't qualify, which was over age. Qualified. Then later on, she finished, she graduated, she started working. In the meantime, she came to faith in the Lord and she heard the words. And she decided that she will cling on to that verse. Just anyway, eventually she did become a pilot. And this particular video of her testimony is being shared around as, how a person clings on to God's promises and sees the fulfillment of her dreams. So superficially, everything seems okay. So let's first of all take the verse that has been quoted over here and we will see its background. The background is Jerusalem, when King Nebuchadnezzar had besieged the city. So there was something happening. There were prophets in Jerusalem who were prophesying that Nebuchadnezzar will not breach the walls. Jerusalem will not fall because Lord gave her defense. Nebuchadnezzar's attempts at breaking down Jerusalem proved to be futile. This is what the prophets were prophesying. One lone prophet deferred, his name was Jeremiah. Jeremiah said, Nebuchadnezzar, "Come, come, come, come." Come. Nine. Just to reflect since you are joining, there is a video that's going around in our various WhatsApp groups where there is a testimony of a girl who desired to be a pilot, but for various reasons was not able to. And then someone shares this verse with her. Jeremiah, chapter twenty-nine and verse eleven. "I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you a hope and a future." So she clings on to this promise and eventually things open up for her. She gets the opportunity to go and learn to fly and she eventually becomes a pilot. And the video is an encouragement for people to hang on to God's promises and to see it. So it is very important for us to discuss what we are discussing because every once in a while something like this keeps coming up. So we must be careful about how we understand God's word and what God's word, what role God's word plays in our lives. So we need to ask, to whom was this promise made? What were the circumstances of this promise? What is the meaning of this promise? And does it apply to me? So if a promise is made to an individual, it is made only to that individual, it is applicable only to that person. If a promise is made to a group, it is applicable to me if I am a part of that group. But it does not apply to me if I am not a part of that group. So I need to ask myself, to whom was this promise made and the what circumstances were it made? Will it be applicable to a person like me? These are some questions that we need to ask ourselves. So we said, let us see the background of this verse. The background is the land of Judah, the southern theater. It was being attacked by King Nebuchadnezzar. And Nebuchadnezzar, there were prophets in Jerusalem who said Nebuchadnezzar will not come. But Nebuchadnezzar arrived. Then the prophets were prophesying Nebuchadnezzar will not be able to breach the walls of Jerusalem. Jerusalem is safe because God is on her side. There was one prophet who deferred, that was Jeremiah. He said the walls of Jerusalem will be breached. Nebuchadnezzar will sack the city. He will take away inhabitants of the city as prisoners of war, as captives. He will take them away to Babylon. So people considered Jeremiah to be a breaker. In a time of war, like suppose there was war between India and Afghanistan. I mean, what would you think of a guy who tells the people in India, you want to be a believer? Okay, this is negative religion. Nobody likes negative religion, we like positive religion. We want people to be fed with opulism and evil for war. And worse, Nebuchadnezzar sent surrender to Jeremiah, said surrender to Nebuchadnezzar. That was treason, how can you talk like that? You don't talk surrender. So there were people in Jerusalem who were prepared to fight Nebuchadnezzar. There were people who were trying to flee Jerusalem. But he was proposing a third alternative, surrender, not to take care of it. It was not like Jeremiah supported much to such an extent that he turned bitter in his complaints against God. He said, you have deceived me, look what is happening to me. Why did you make me all this? Nebuchadnezzar did come, walls of Jerusalem were breached, city was sacked. All that was in the temple in Jerusalem was taken away. Temple itself was set on fire. People were taken away captive and now they had gone off to Babylon where they had gone there as prisoners of war. If we travel around India, we have many sculptures. From these sculptures, we understand what our ancestors dressed like, what was their way of life. But in Israel, there is a problem. The Israelis were very serious about God's commandments. One of them said, "You shall not make for yourself an image of anything in heaven above or on earth beneath." They took that very literally. So there were no portraits, no sculptures of anyone in Israel, nothing. So we don't know how they dressed themselves even because they never made images of anything. But there are captives occasionally have images of Israelis. So these are the only ways by which we know. For instance, there is a tomb in Egypt, the tomb of an Egyptian's pride, where in the paintings, in those days Egyptians were king shiva everywhere. Okay? In sharp contrast, in this painting are men who disappeared for the first time and they have slaves. Egyptians taskmasters making them work. So we immediately can see, hey, these must be the Israeli slaves in Egypt. And they are doing exactly what we read in the Bible. The Israelis are doing, making bricks. That's what they are doing. And you have that taskmasters who have bricks over them. And there are even some of them with multicolored striped robe much as what Jacob, Jacob had given to Jezza. So we are even to understand, oh, this is what these guys must have looked like. Because God tells the people of Israel that they should not render their beard. So the Israelis must have had long beard, okay? And this painting very vividly illustrates that. Then there is another one of the Assyrian king Shagmanazir. Standing and yes, on the floor in front of him is Jehud, king of Israel kissing the floor at his feet. Please introduce to him. So that is one place where we are able to see what an Israel in those days looked like. And another place of Hebrew captives being taken away to Babylon. So Babylonian hard rings are there with the Hebrews hands over their head, tied under the elbow tight so they can't move, okay? Tied to each other and being taken off as captives. The very picture is so sad. So that is how they were economy. Nebuchadnezzar breached the city walls, took Israelis captive. They went off as prisoners of war. They had very little with them and there they were in Babylon. And if you remember, there is, there is someone sufficiently severe in the room, we hope I can relate and talk around the chat. There used to be a famous Bolian song by the name of Babylon. Maybe sad song, yes. And then you may have to hurt us. Alright. So this song is actually a song in the Bible. And it's basically these Jewish captives in Babylon. And their tormentors were asking them, sing to us songs from your land. And so they were saying, how shall you sing the works of inner speech land? So they went away captive. Now what? The prophets were active again. So let's turn to Jeremiah chapter twenty-eight. Jeremiah, chapter twenty-eight, verse one. "In the fifth month of that same year, the fourth year, early in the reign of Zerekiah, king of Judah, the prophet Hananiah, son of Azur, who was from Gideon, said to me in the house of the Lord, in the presence of the priests and all the people, 'This is what the Lord Almighty, the God of Israel says, "I will break the yoke of the king of Babylon. Within two years, I will bring back to this place all the articles of the Lord's house that Nebuchadnezzar, son of Babylon, removed,' sorry, king of Babylon, removed from here and took to Babylon. "'I will also bring back to this place Jerukin, son of Jerukin, king of Judah, and all the other exiles from Judah who went to Babylon,' declares the Lord, "'for I will break the yoke of the king of Babylon.'" How does that prophet mean something? Authorized it. It sounds exactly like how the prophets of God normally spoke. This is how we spoke. This is the language of the prophet. But the question is, is this from God? Should the people of Judah, these are the ones whom Nebuchadnezzar did not take away? Nebuchadnezzar took the best of the people, but the worst of them feel like behind. So the worst people stayed back in Jerusalem. And among them, there is this prophet Hananiah who says, "What captivity is going to end? I am going to break the yoke of Nebuchadnezzar. The king who has been taken captive will return. All the vessels from the temple which have been taken will be brought back. All the people who have been captured and taken will be returned to this land." So what should the people do? To a people who are broken and hopeless, this is giving them hope. But should it stand without being challenged? If it is not from God, should people ask, is this from the Lord? Is God speaking? Okay? Let's see verse five. "Then the prophet Jeremiah replied to the prophet Hananiah before the priests and all the people who were standing in the house of the Lord. He said, Amen, may the Lord do so. May the Lord fulfill the words you have prophesied by bringing the articles of the Lord's house and all the exiles back to this place from Babylon, nevertheless." What he is saying, what he, I wish this would happen. I honestly desire that this should happen, but nevertheless, listen to what I have to say in your hearing and in the hearing of the people. From early times, the prophets who preceded you and me have prophesied war, disaster and plague against many countries and great kingdoms. But the prophets who prophesied peace will be recognized as the one truly sent by the Lord only if his predictions come true. Meaning, there have always been wars. So if somebody prophesies war, that's no big deal. It is bound to happen. But if somebody is prophesying peace, then we know he is a man of God only if his words actually come true, only if his predictions come true. But the prophet who prophesies peace will be recognized as one truly sent by the Lord only if his prediction comes true. Then the prophet Hananiah took the yoke off the neck of the prophet Jeremiah and broke it. So this actually goes to earlier chapters where Jeremiah made a yoke and he was going around telling people that they should submit to the yoke of Nebuchadnezzar. Okay? Then he broke it, verse eleven, and he said before all the people, "This is what the Lord says, 'In the same day will I break the yoke of Nebuchadnezzar, king of Babylon, off the neck of all the nations within two years.'" At this, the prophet Jeremiah went on his way. Shortly after the prophet Hananiah had broken the yoke off the neck of the prophet Jeremiah, the word of the Lord came to Jeremiah. "Go and tell Hananiah, this is what the Lord says, 'You have broken a wooden yoke, but in its place you will get a yoke of iron.'" This is what the Lord Almighty, the God of Israel says, "I will put an iron yoke on the necks of all these nations to make them serve Nebuchadnezzar, king of Babylon, and they will serve him. I will give him, I will even give him control over the wild animals." Then the prophet Jeremiah said to Hananiah the prophet, "Listen, Hananiah, the Lord has not sent you, yet you have persuaded this nation to trust in lies. Therefore, this is what the Lord says, 'I am about to remove you from the face of the earth. This very year, you are going to die because you have preached rebellion against the Lord.'" Why rebellion against the Lord? Because the Lord through Jeremiah asked the people to surrender to Nebuchadnezzar and to submit to it, whereas he was preaching, submitting to the conflict, okay? "In the seventh month of that same year, Hananiah, the prophet, died." Now for us to stop and think a little. Hananiah's words sounded very convincing because he uses the kind of language the prophets of God use. But he was not a genuine prophet. So some questions emerged immediately. What must have motivated Hananiah to prophesy lies in the name of the Lord? Why do you think he prophesied lies? What could be his motive? To gain confidentiality, that could be a very good thing, okay? You walk up to a person and tell him to, he is not going to really like you. But you go around telling people, you want to succeed, you want to, they all like, you want to, you spread a positive message, then everyone feels very good and they, yeah, confidentiality is one of them. Any others? Maybe he was himself deceived. There is always the possibility that the man did not really know that he was a false prophet. He sincerely believed that the Lord will break the Babylonian rule. How could such a deception come about? Yes, in First Kings, chapter twenty-two, there is a similar episode. There the king is different, it is a hell and the prophet is also different. Micah is a prophet. There, an evil spirit was speaking through the lies of, through the mouths of all the prophets. And there was one genuine prophet who deferred from all the false prophets. Because this false prophecy was coming from a spirit and the prophets themselves could not discern that this is not a message from God, okay? So there are some things we have to keep in mind. Even today, there are people who come and give very authoritative messages, we need to be a little discerning. We need to be a little discerning. We need to ask ourselves, is this what God has really spoken? We need to ask ourselves that question, okay? Chapter twenty-nine. This is the text of the letter that the prophet Jeremiah sent to Jerusalem, sent from Jerusalem to the surviving elders among the exiles and to the priests, the prophets and all the other people Nebuchadnezzar had carried into exile from Jerusalem to Babylon. So what had happened? Nebuchadnezzar had carried people, Hananiah's prophecies were spreading. Even among the captives, they were beginning to entertain hopes of an early return from captivity. Within two years, they will return. The king will be restored. All these things, they were looking ahead to, okay? Verse two. "This was after King Jehakin and the queen Hamra, the court officials and the leaders of Judah and Jerusalem, the craftsmen and the artisans had gone into exile from Jerusalem. He entrusted the letter to Elasa, son of Shaphan, and to Gemara, son of Hilkiah, whom Zerekiah, king of Judah, sent to King Nebuchadnezzar in Babylon. It says, 'This is what the Lord Almighty, the God of Israel, 'says to all those I carried into exile from Jerusalem to Babylon. Build houses and settle down, plant gardens and eat what they produce. Marry and have sons and daughters, find wives for your sons and give your daughters in marriage so that they who may have sons and daughters, increase in number there and do not.'" So what was happening? Because those who went into captivity believed that they were going to return soon. They were not doing anything in Babylon. Because nobody wants to settle down in Babylon. Then Jeremiah sends the letter, right? Captivity is not going to end anytime soon. It's going to last seventy years. Some of you are going to spend the rest of your life in Babylon. So settle down. Take up jobs there. Build houses. Get married, have children. Find wives for your sons. Give your daughters in marriage. Settle down, you're not going to come back. Also seek the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have taken you into exile. Suppose you were a Jew who had been taken captive to Babylon. What kind of prayers you will be praying? Oh God, bring Nebuchadnezzar to ruin. Destroy Babylon. God says, no. Seek the prosperity of the city where the Lord has taken you. Because if it prospers, you too will prosper. God tied up the prosperity of his peoples with the prosperity of the city into which they had been taken captive. So they had to pray for the prosperity of Babylon. They had to pray for the prosperity of its rulers. God says, when they prosper, you also will prosper. Did some people take this literally? Yes, people like Daniel and Shadrach and Meshach, Meshach and Abednego. They sought the prosperity of Babylon. Daniel ruled wisely. When things were not going right, when Nebuchadnezzar really had become a proud and arrogant tyrant, Daniel actually confronted him and said, the king should repent of his evil. He did not desire that the disaster which God had decreed for Nebuchadnezzar, how he would be driven away from his palace, live like an animal for seven years. Daniel didn't want that to happen. He said, you repent? They sought the prosperity of the Babylonians. Verse eight, yes, this is what the Lord Almighty, the God of Israel says. Do not let the prophets and divinists among you deceive you. Do not listen to the dreams you encourage them to have. They have prophesied lies to you in my name. I have not sent them, declares the Lord. So, here comes another dimension. Do not listen, I'll read that part again, do not listen to the dreams you encouraged them to have. These false prophets were having dreams which the people of Israel were encouraging them to have. So why did, why did the prophets prophesy prosperity for them? Because this is what they were wanting. Like, like we read later on in the last days, people will gather around their teachers to tell them what their teaching years are wanting to hear. So people can sense what people like to hear and you speak accordingly. Do not listen to the dreams you encourage them to have. They have prophesied lies to you in my name. I have not sent them, declares the Lord. This is what the Lord says. When seventy years are completed for Babylon, I will come to you and fulfill my gracious promise to bring you back to this place. Captivity is not good when it's soon. Seventy years you are going to remain over. Some of the Israelis did not accept this message. Some accepted like Daniel and prospered. Some did not accept. They tried to raise a rebellion against the Nebuchadnezzar in the land of Babylon. A rebellion that was brutally crushed and everyone involved killed. Some decided that we don't want to remain here, they fled to Egypt. Jeremiah wanted, don't do that. The sword will follow you to Egypt. So there in Egypt, Nebuchadnezzar sent people and destroyed them. But the ones who submitted to him, they prospered, they prospered. Verse eleven. This is a context. For I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord. Plans to prosper you and not to harm you. Plans to give you hope and a future. So, what will the meaning of this sentence be? Not cling on to your dream. Rather, whatever drink you have, lay it aside. My plan is for you to be in Babylon. Don't try to hide the thing. Don't try to feel bad about it. Stay put wherever you are. Seek the prosperity of the people among whom I have raised you. Settle down. I have plans for you. Seventy years down, I will bring you back. Seventy years down, they got to it, yes, they did. And there were people, godly men, like Nahmiah and Ezra, who returned back after seventy years. Those who trusted in the Lord, submitted to the authority of the ruler of Babylon, though he was an ungodly man. He was not a Jew. He was a worshipper of idols. But God told his people to submit. Seventy years later, God kept his promise, brought the people of his head back, okay? Then, verse eleven again. For I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord. Plans to prosper you and not to harm you. Plans to give you hope and a future. Then you will call upon me and come and pray to me, and I will listen to you. Okay, I want you to remember this and turn to the book, keep your hand here, turn to the book of Daniel. Daniel, chapter nine. Ready? In the first year of Darius, son of Xerxes, a mid-by descent, who was made ruler over the Babylonian kingdom. In the first year of his reign, I, Daniel, understood from the scriptures according to the word of the Lord given to Jeremiah the prophet, that the desertation of Jerusalem would last seventy years. This is that. So, Daniel is reading the book of Jeremiah and suddenly says, hey, it's written over here that the captivity of Jerusalem should last only for seventy years. That is what Jeremiah had written to the exiles. He was one of the exiles, remember? Okay, there he read. And what does it say? I understood from the scriptures according to the word of the Lord given to Jeremiah the prophet, that the desertation of Jerusalem would last seventy years. So I turned to the Lord God and pleaded with him in prayer and petition, in fasting and in sackcloth and anshel. So he prayed, correct? So now keep this in mind and turn back to Jeremiah twenty-nine. Ready? We'll read verse eleven again. For I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord. Plans to prosper you and not to harm you. Plans to give you hope and a future. Then you will call upon me and come and pray to me, and I will listen to you. That was the promise. Okay? So Daniel remembers, God said seventy years. God said pray and I will listen. So after seventy years are over, Daniel prayed. God listens and set in motion the chain of events that resulted in the Jews returning to Israel, okay? Verse thirteen, you will seek me and find me. When you seek me with all your heart, I will be found by you and will bring you back from captivity. I will gather you from all the nations and places where I have banished you, declares the Lord. I will bring you back to the place from which I carried you into exile. You may say, the Lord has raised up prophets for us in Babylon. But this is what the Lord says about the king who sits on David's throne and all the people who remain in this city, your countrymen, who did not go with you into exile. Yes, this is what the Lord Almighty says. I will send the sword, famine, and plague against them, and I will make them like poor figs that are so bad they cannot be eaten. I will pursue them with the sword, famine, and plague, and will make them abhorrent to all the kingdoms of the earth and an object of cursing and horror, and spawn and reproach among all the nations where I drive them. For they have not listened to my words, declares the Lord. Words that I sent to them again and again by my servants, the prophets. And you, exiles, have not listened either, declares the Lord. Therefore, hear the word of the Lord, all you exiles, whom I have sent away from Jerusalem to Babylon. This is what the Lord Almighty, the God of Israel, says about Ehud, son of Colossians, and Zerakiah, son of Masia, who are prophesying lies to me in my name. I will hand them over to Nebuchadnezzar, king of Babylon. He will put them to death before your very eyes. Because of them, all the exiles from Judah who are in Babylon will use this curse. The Lord treat you like Zerakiah and Ehud, whom the king of Babylon burnt in the fire. For they have outraged things, they have done outrageous things in Israel. They have committed adultery with their neighbor's wives. And in my name are some lines which I did not tell them to do. I know, I know it, and I am right, and I am witness to it, declares the Lord. So, when three words Jeremiah's message ends with, okay? The person who is referred to over here, Zerakiah, was the very king. The prophet Hananiah was saying, and I will bring him back within two years. The same verses, God says, I will, I'll put to death before your very eyes, which is what was done. The first thing that Nebuchadnezzar did was to put to death his sons. And then he blinded him so that the last thing that we will remember seeing to his own eyes is the death of his son. So, that was the miserable way those who believe in the false prophecy came to end. So I just want us to do. Sometimes, sometimes, hearing nice things makes us feel good. But that is not the point. You don't tell a person who is dying of cancer that he doesn't have cancer. That all will be well, he will recover. No, you tell him he's got cancer, that he's going to die, that he's going to meet his death soon, that he needs to make peace with him. You need to tell him that. You can't hide the truth from him. Hiding the truth from him will prove fatal. You have to tell him the truth. The truth is not always telling. The truth may sometimes be hidden. But the truth always liberates. When you believe it and you die. We are not saying over here, this, that video which I talked about, that we should not learn. But we are saying that we shouldn't take verses from the Bible and hold on to them when they have no application for us. Nor does it mean from what we have said that God doesn't have good plans. God has good plans for all of us. But the good plans that God has for us may sometimes involve a bitter passage, like submitting to the enemy. If God wants me to do it. It may be humbling. It may be beginning, but if that is what God wants me to do, then that is what I should do because in that is my development, okay? There are certain promises of God which are universal promises. Meaning, they are not addressed to a particular individual or a particular group of individuals. They have application to all people. Those promises, we may always hold on. But I should always ask, before I hold on to a verse in scripture, it does apply to me. Just because it is in the Bible, it doesn't mean it applies to me. So when the Lord Jesus told Judas, whatever you are about to do, go and do quickly, it does not mean that he is saying that to everyone under all circumstances. That was specifically told to one individual and it was told to him about an evil thing that he was going to do. Not a good thing. So, we should not think that that applies to me. So there are some promises which are applicable to all people under all circumstances. Those, we may hang on to. But the ones which are for specific individuals, specific class of individuals, we should be careful not to borrow it and hold on to it just because it makes me feel good to do so, right? Father, we thank you for your word. We pray for us that we will not be, let us pray by every wind of doctrine, but rather, Father, we pray that we will know the truth and we will set free by the truth. Thank you for hearing. The prayers are burning in the heart of Jesus.